Good evening and welcome to the Chatham Select Board Community Forum. Today is November 9, 2021. I'm Peter Kokolas, Chair of the Select Board. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's June 16, 2021 signing of an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, including the extension of his March 12 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and that's General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, until April 1, 2022, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted both in person and via remote for public participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while it is in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-945-4410. Our conference ID is 286-925-281. Let me do that again, 286-925-281. Or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And a reminder to everyone, please mute your mic and turn off your camera until you're spoken to. Those people that are here, it's nice to see a nice group of folks again. If you go up to the mic, I'm not sure it's on, but the button should be green. If it isn't, push it and please identify yourself. Okay. This is a listening session for the board with the Council on Aging and with members joining us from the Finance Committee, which I appreciate very much so.
Do you want to do a roll call?
Pardon me? Yeah, I'll do it right after I finish this one thing. Yeah, well, I guess I will. Thank you. Let me do a roll call. We have one that's virtual. We'll start with Select Board Member Davis.
Present.
Select Board Member Castro.
Present.
Select Board Member Dykens.
Present.
And virtually, Select Board Member Metters.
I'm out here. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. And Peter Kokolas, the Chair, is present. Before I turn this over to our facilitator, I'd like to make a point that this is, again, a listening session. It's an opportunity for everyone in the public to make their comments. Please, we're not taking any kind of briefings or discussions like that. You'll have plenty of time to do that after we're done here. So, again, before I introduce Brad, I'm looking for his colleague, Leslie Sandberg. There she is. Welcome, Leslie. And by the way, Leslie is a select person from Provincetown. We won't hold that against her. Okay, now let me turn it over to Brad Schiff, who's the President of Pierce Coat. He's been with us before. Many of you may know him. And let me turn it over to you, Brad. Go ahead.
Thank you, Peter. Mr. Chair, may I remove my mask? It might be illegal.
Yeah, that's right. He asked if he could take his mask off.
May I remove my mask? It'd just be a little bit easier, I think, to facilitate.
Yeah.
Okay.
He will.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Chatham Senior Center Community Forum. Now, we want this forum to be a productive session for all Chatham stakeholders, those who are here in the town annex tonight, and we have a nice big crowd, those viewing virtually or on Town Channel 18, and for those in our town government. In order to ensure we provide a framework to express your comments and ideas, we have developed five questions which will help keep the session focused. Now, the questions have been developed to be general enough, yet specific, to help facilitate in gathering and categorizing the information in separate buckets. Each question will appear on screen tonight when it is first posed. With the time allotted in our two-hour forum this evening, we plan to spend a sufficient time on each. So, the questions are, and are we going to be listing those on the screen right now? Mark? Or I can just read these? They will be coming up once we go to each question. The first question is, do you want a senior center in Chatham? Why or why not? Number two, what were the lessons learned from previous proposed senior center sites which were not approved? What can we do better this time? Number three, where should a new Chatham senior center be located? What's your reasoning? Number four, what type of new programming and amenities would you like to see at the senior center? And number five, what else would you like us to know about the new senior center? So, this is how each of you can participate tonight. You can follow the video conference link that, as Peter said, is on the Chatham Town website. To participate, you can use the hand raise function, and you'll be muted until you're recognized to speak. If you would prefer not to appear on screen, you can certainly participate by using the call-in number and password instead. Now, for those in the audience here tonight at the annex, please form a line to speak at the podium once we start. Another option is to send your comments through the Community Voice portal or email communityforum@chatham-ma.gov. And we'll read as many of those emails during the forum tonight as we can. As a reminder, as Peter just said, this isn't a panel discussion. It's not a question-and-answer session, nor a meeting for formal presentations. But it's a great way to express your comments about the future of the senior center. As Peter said, the Select Board will have a much more formal discussion and time for presentations about the senior center. But tonight, it's all about you. It's all about your ideas. So, we need your help to make this productive. We ask that you respond to that one particular question only as we proceed, and you observe a three-minute maximum time. We want to make sure that we're able to hear from as many of you who want to participate. But you can participate multiple times tonight. So, please feel free to respond to any or all of the questions as we proceed. But we just want to focus on one question at a time. When you participate in the forum, please give your first name, your connection to Chatham. And I think we're ready to begin. So, let's begin with the first question, and that is, as we're waiting to put it up. Number one, do you want a new senior center in Chatham? Why or why not? I'd invite any of those who in the audience who want to come up to the podium to just start going up there. But Shawna, first, we're going to start with emails. And Shawna, will you read one of the emails we've received?
Sure. This one is from Judy. I do not believe there is a need for a new building for a senior center. With the ongoing cost of fixing our water wells, I believe the best option is to fix up the current COA. As of today, November 5, no one has been using the current COA. Even the folks that run it said they were pleased the way everything worked during COVID with online forums. There is no reason they cannot go back inside and utilize the current building. On an opposing viewpoint, we have, I believe it's Usha. Yes, a new senior center would be an asset to the town and would bring Chatham in line with many other towns. As well, an increase in the senior population makes the center a natural and a good return to taxes financed by seniors.
Okay. Thank you so very much, Shawna, for starting off with emails. We have, sir, are you going to speak here or are we going up to the podium, up to here to the podium?
I'll sit here.
Yes. Okay. Ma'am?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Joan. I am a resident of West Chatham.
Joan, welcome to the forum tonight.
Thank you very much. I feel a senior center, sorry, a senior center is important to seniors and others. However, I do not necessarily believe that it has to be a standalone. I believe that it could be a collaborative, like many towns in the state of Massachusetts have done, and that would be a collaborative of intergenerational individuals. And in that regard, I won't go on about where. However, I will be back up to talk about the where. I believe that seniors like myself use other facilities in the town that can be expanded, and I would like to see us consider that. Thank you.
Okay. Joan, thank you very, very much. Let's take a virtual call right now, someone online. Jill?
Thank you, Brad. I have Meredith Frye with her hands up. And anyone wishing to speak on this question, please raise your hand in the Teams app. Thanks.
Meredith, welcome to the Senior Center Community Forum. Meredith?
How did that happen? Hello?
Hello?
Hi, how are you?
Very, very well. Welcome.
Thank you.
So, do you think we should? So, how do you feel on this first question, Meredith?
I do believe we need a place for our seniors, and I believe the existing building, if it could be renovated, would be a great asset for our seniors. There's lots of building and renovations going on in town, and I truly believe we could make the original COA a beautiful building for our seniors.
So, you think that the renovation of the current building rather than a brand-new building?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else you want us to know on this first question from you?
I would like to comment on the collaborative. The building could be the center, and we could have other programs for the seniors in other buildings in town.
Okay, great. And you know what? We want you to come back later, Meredith, because one of the, I think it's our fourth question, is what kind of other programming, you know, should we have included in the senior center? So, please, will you come back here for question number four?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to hold you to it. Okay. So, we have another gentleman here at the annex. Please state your name, sir.
Hi, I'm John Poynion. I'm a resident for 24 years in this wonderful town.
Great.
And an active participant at the Council on Aging. At one point, I was the president of the Friends and Treasurer and a bunch of other functions. Anyway, the thing I learned there was that this center is a very useful place. It has major deficiencies, and so I'm very much in favor of developing a new one. I can give you lots of reasons why, but the main thing is that we have a men's group. It no longer meets there because it's completely inadequate for the group of men, and we started there, and we now can no longer meet there because it's unacceptable to us.
John, why don't you, you said you had a lot of reasons why you don't want to continue in that building. Can you just amplify that a little bit more?
If you, just the plant itself is broken up into many places. It has beams in it. We used to have birthday parties, and you've got, you can't even have an entertainer in the birthday party because the entertainer can't see the people that are there. It's broken up. There's noise in the kitchen. If you want to have a meeting in the large room, that's disruptive. If a person wants to have a private confidence meeting with the people who provide guidance for things like health care and other things, it's very difficult to accomplish. The rooms are very small. There's a cellar where we used to have movies downstairs that, again, has beams all over the place, and so you often find that if you get more than 10 or 20 people in there, you're just blocked. But the other thing is that the place, when I first went to that building, I was shocked at the dismal-looking building it was, and I thought, oh, is this, you know, this is a council of aging. I didn't need counseling. I'm 84. I'm quite content in being an old guy. I didn't need counseling. What I wanted was a place where I could go and meet my peers, and we could enjoy the things that were being offered there. And I found the facility was constantly bothering us. There are 1,500 people in this town who contribute to the Friends group, so there's no shortage of people who know that the council is there.
And John, excuse me another 20 seconds.
But I would say most of them don't come because the building is such an appalling mess. Thank you.
All right, John, thank you so very much for your comments. Let's take another call online.
We have Nancy Fields.
Nancy, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm doing very, very well. So, how do you feel? Do we need a new senior center in Chatham?
We definitely need a new senior center, and I actually lowered my hand.
Well, how come? How come? How come we need it?
I lowered my hand, actually, just before the previous speaker finished because I felt like he said so many of the things that I would have said about the inadequacy of the building. So, in the interest of time, I'll just second his comments and let someone else speak.
Okay, Nancy. So, thank you for your comments, and it sounded like that John spoke a lot of the same things that you felt. Do we have another call virtually?
Yes, we have Frank Messina.
Frank Messina, welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. I think there's no question of the inadequacy of the current facility and been well documented, not just by people speaking who use the facility, but by the analysis and the surveys that were done. The building is inadequate and should have been replaced at least 10 or 20 years ago. The seniors in Chatham have been waiting their turn, waiting their turn when the annex was built, waiting their turn when the fire department was done, waiting their turn when the police department was done, and enough is enough. There's no question, the vast majority of people in this community want a new senior center, and I think we have to kind of get off the stick here and make it happen and find a better way to convince people. You know, no question we have a majority. You know, the two-thirds question is a very difficult and a political question, and we have to resolve that and find a way to get this approved. Thank you.
Frank, can you just tell us a little bit about your thinking about why it's inadequate? Just a couple of examples?
Well, there's no question. I think the term that was used previously about dismal is probably a good point. I don't know. I think it was a commercial building when the town took it over, and they shoehorned the senior in there. And if you go to any facility, anywhere in the state, you know, the seniors are treated with a lot more dignity and respect than we have in Chatham. The multiple levels and everything else, their programming is certainly limited. I think the comment which was made earlier about the fact having a virtual senior citizen is absolutely ridiculous. I mean, you know, we need seniors to be together and to be close to one another, especially after the result of the COVID situation and what's going on. But there's no question of the inadequacies, the air conditioning and how the building is heated, the parking. I mean, the list is so long, and certainly, I think, everybody knows about it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Frank. We have another gentleman here at the annex who's about to come up to the podium. And, sir, please state your name.
Stan Mansfield. I've been in Chatham since 1955.
Just a newcomer then, huh?
Yeah, exactly.
All right, Stan?
And I'm in favor.
Do you want a new senior center in Chatham?
I'm in favor of a new senior center.
Okay, tell us why.
Okay. Well, two months ago, a few of interested citizens of Chatham formed a group to make recommendations to the Council on Aging for a new senior center. We were called the Anonymous Group, and I don't think we're that anonymous anymore. Now, the first part of our study was to determine why we have failed on numerous occasions to pass a new senior center. Our latest failure was due to three factors: location, size, and cost.
And you know something? I'm just going to interrupt you right there because, only because that is going to, I would like to have you start off our second question because that exactly is what did we learn from the past? Could we just hold on for what you're saying?
You know, we're trying to correct errors that were made in the past.
I want you to start off the second question in just a few minutes. Would you do that for us? It's absolutely excellent what I think you're going to be saying.
After I talk?
After, we just want to be able to talk about the second question. It's going to be what are the lessons learned? And I think you would be great to start that one off.
Well, the lessons we...
Right now, we just want to know, why do you think we should have a senior center?
Well, let me just go to the center part of my discussion, okay? Our group visited a number of senior centers in the area: Harwich, Orleans, Brewster, Wellfleet, Falmouth, and by phone, we were connected with Eastham and... The air conditioning, the, and how the building is heated. The parking, I mean, the list is so long and certainly I think everybody knows about it. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Frank. We have another gentleman here at the annex who's about to come up to the podium. And sir, please state your name.
Stan Mansfield. I've been in Chatham since 1955.
Oh, just a newcomer then, huh?
Yeah, exactly.
All right, Stan. You want a new senior center in Chatham?
I'm in favor of a new senior center.
Okay, tell us why.
Okay. Well, two months ago, a few of interested citizens of Chatham formed a group to make recommendations to the Council on Aging for a new senior center. We were called the Anonymous Group. And I don't think we're that anonymous anymore. Now, the first part of our study was to determine why we have failed on numerous occasions to pass a new senior center. Our latest failure was due to three factors. Location, size, and cost.
And you know something? I'm just gonna interrupt you right there because, only because that is gonna, I would like to have you start off our second question because that exactly is what did we learn from the past? Could we just hold on for what you're saying?
You know, we're trying, we're trying to correct errors that were made in the past.
I want you to start off the second question in just a few minutes. Would you do that for us? It's absolutely excellent what I think you're gonna be saying.
After I talk?
After, we just want to be able to talk about the second question. It's gonna be what are the lessons learned? And I think you would be great to start that one off.
Well, the lessons we.
Right now, right now, we just want to know why, why do you think we should have a senior center?
Well, let me just go to the center part of my, my discussion, okay? Our group visited a number of senior centers in the area. Harwich, Orleans, Brewster, Wellfleet, Falmouth. And by phone, we were connected with Eastham and, and Dennis. And this will get to your, to your point in just a second. We wanted to find out what, what programs they're offering and how their facilities were arranged to meet the needs of seniors. And I'm not gonna go into the, to those meetings, but if any of you had been there and seen these other senior centers as we did, I think you would agree to us or come to the same conclusion that our senior center is an embarrassment. And interestingly enough, at one senior center, we talked to a director who back in 1992 was the director of the senior center in Chatham. And that was the year that the town of Chatham rented Stony Hill. Okay? And the person who was in charge told her that, quote, "This is the best we can do." Now, here we are 29 years later with a senior population that is 56.6% of the residents in Chatham and still the best we can do.
I'm sure we get about another 20 seconds on this particular question.
I, I, I think we'd all agree that the current senior center, basically it's a house, a residential house. And the setup has absolutely no relationship to what a senior might need. None.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. I want you to come back and would you please start off our question number two? Because we want to talk about in just a few, few moments. Let's take another virtual call online, Jill.
Thanks, Brad. I don't have anyone else, but I want to just recommend that people turn off your video if you're not speaking. You're on live TV. We can see everything. Thank you.
Yes, we're talking to you, sir.
Yes, Patrick Lee, we see you.
We don't have any more online. Let's ta, is there anybody else in the audience who wanted to answer question one? Okay. Shawna, do we have any other comments on question number one?
We sure do.
Okay, great. Let you read a couple. Go ahead.
Lynn says, yes, I do want to see a senior center in Chatham. Why? Socialization is important as we age and as we lose partners and close friends. The senior center and its activities would help to ease that transition. The challenge for the senior center and its activities is the different age groups that make up this audience. From, this one is from, just Mrs. Dory. No, I do not want a new COA because the existing building location is adequate, just renovate. Through the Community Voice portal, we have from E. Chatham. I believe the existing building could be renovated or a small addition to the community center to share the facility services. From Liz, I think we could do more interaction with other local entities such as the library. The community center would be a good location as it is central and seniors may enjoy some kind of activity with others in the building. A lot of seniors are active and use the gym, then could go, then could do to the center for another activity. The current COA management is not listening to the new generation of seniors, which I am a part of. I'm tired of cooking and do not want recipes or cooking classes. I want to be engaged with learning new things by interesting speakers and doing activities in the community. I'm not fond of the newsletter. That seems to dwell on age, death, and dying. I do like the monthly meals that are tasty and it means no food shopping or cooking. From Dan, at town meeting, the voters said no and here to the results of the town meeting. Focus on the real issues of the town such as water quality, to name just one. Those are some of the comments from the Community Voice. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank for everybody responded. Again, if you're watching, you're watching the Chatham Senior Center Community Forum tonight, the Select Board's meeting. And if you want to participate virtually, certainly coming down here at the Town Annex. And you can participate through the Community Forum at chatham-ma.gov. That's communityforum@chatham-ma.gov. All right, let's go to question two. Let's put question number two up. And the drumroll is? It's coming? Okay. So what were the, let's go back in history a little bit, recent history. What were the lessons learned from the previous proposed senior center sites which were not approved? What can we do better this time? Let's take a, let's first of all, Shawna, we have an email or two for this question?
Sure. From, let's see, from Judy. The lessons that should be learned from previous proposed sites. The previous design was over the top in terms of need and wants. It was way too expensive. People refused to listen to the public comments. It did nothing but argue. In terms of moving forward, lower the expectations and do not expect taxpayers to fund millions of dollars. Also, here's another one from Andrea. I believe the senior center did not receive the votes at last summer's town meeting because the water well problem took front and center. It was textbook marketing. Raise an issue like drinking water. Discuss how expensive it will become. Knowing 100% of residents agree and people made a choice, clean water or a new senior center. Another one is lessons learned previously are the COA board and the select board did not or refuse to listen to outsiders. Also, several COA board members were not truthful about the current facility. Rooms are not overcrowded.
Okay, thank you, Shawna. Let's take, for those who want to participate, question number two in the annex, if you want to head up to the podium. And particularly the gentleman who just spoke, because I want you back up there. I said you're gonna be next and you're gonna be next, sir. But let's take, let's take someone from online, Jill.
Thank you. I have an E. J. McKenna.
E. J., welcome to the community, the Senior Center Community Forum.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I believe that the center that was proposed on Route 28 didn't have any acceptable outside areas for activities that some seniors might be looking for. Any sporting activities or walking activities or just, you know, places outside to spend time. And I think that the, the seniors today, many of them, are looking for, for different activities and are very, many of them are a very active group. So I would like to see something that would encompass those kinds of activities.
E. J., first of all, two questions for you. What's your connection to Chatham? We're kind of asking everybody, are you a year-round resident, seasonal resident? How long you been here? Do you work in town? That kind of thing.
I am a year-round resident.
Okay.
Retired.
Okay.
We connected to Chatham for almost 40 years. But we've been here year-round for nine years.
Okay, that's fantastic. So when you say that there wasn't enough, was there not enough room because of the location being on Main Street or just the, the site itself?
Both, I think. There really, there was really no access to any other kind of activities except inside activities and it was a two-story building. So there are many of us, I belong to the Chatham Walkers and, you know, that's a varied age group all the way up to 89. And, you know, they're very active in athletic activities. So that kind of thing I think is appealing to many people. So while there may be, you know, many seniors who are looking for other things, I think there's also a large group of people that would like to have access to some kind of, you know, basketball courts, tennis courts, you know, walking trails, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you so much for suggestions. Is there somebody here, sir? Do you want to come up? Please come up. Again, we are talking about question number two. What were the lessons learned from previous proposed senior center sites which were not approved? What can we do better this time?
I was, I was about to talk about our failures last time. And they were due to location, size, and costs. The location was probably sketchy at best. And the size was too large and the cost was too much. And our presentation that we're developing for the COA is going to, is going to answer those questions. And that'll be made probably in the next, next couple of weeks. The whole purpose of our group is to make a recommendation, a presentation to the COA for a new senior center, location, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, thank you so much. We have another online call, Jill?
Not yet. If anyone would like to speak on question two, please raise your hand in our virtual Teams environment.
Okay, we have someone here at the podium.
Hi, Joan Craig again. Just FYI, I grew up coming to Chatham. We've owned our home since 1987 and I'm a full-town resident since 2010, very happily, I might add. With regards to number two, I think what we want to also see is response to some of the questions that I and others have brought up at public forums with regards to other locations. And that hasn't truly happened recently. Such as considering the community center. I know a few people like myself have said it's, it's an underused, underutilized, but great location. Many of us who are seniors utilize it or will be back to utilize it now that it's open more. It does have space that is not in use. It has property in the back that can be expanded. Why not consider the fact that the gifted property was not a given? People were not in favor of it.
And let me just interrupt you for a moment because our next question is gonna be, and I know it's gonna be a lot of different opinions on this one, is gonna be the location. But just going back in terms of question two, what did we learn from the past sites?
Well, I think because it lost, we've learned a lot.
Please tell us.
There was, in my estimation, a lot of frustration and misinformation on all sides. On all sides.
Such, such as?
Such as statistics. Such as, is there a need? I think anyone who sees that property will say there is a need. Is there a need to save it, to tear it down, to sell it, to use it for something else? And I, I personally was frustrated that over the years, I was not called upon to discuss the community center at a public town meeting until this past spring. And I think if we are going to do our due diligence, not only as select board, but also as people that go to town meeting, then you have to listen to all of us, whether you agree with us or not, and maybe perhaps step out of the box to say, well, maybe we have a third alternative.
Okay, great. And we're gonna want you to come back too, to talk about that alternative in, in just a moment.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Jill, we have somebody online?
No, no one has.
We do not. Well, we have a gentleman coming up here from the annex.
I've already introduced myself, but.
Yes, you have.
I think the, the last meeting that we had was indicative of not understanding seniors. The first place, no one had surveyed. Remember I earlier had said there were 1,500 members of the Friends of, of Council of Aging. These are people who donate money every year that help support things there. So they're a pretty enthusiastic group. They were never surveyed for what they wanted. And so we had, we had people coming who had very diverse opinions. The second thing is we had it outside with rain threatening. And seniors, many of them don't like to go out in the rain. And so when they saw the rain was coming, they didn't go. There hadn't been a concerted effort to get, to get out of vote because people didn't feel they were involved. And if you're gonna get the community involved, then you have to get a resolution of what it is that we really want. And I think the failure of the meeting was the weather, the fact that there were 650 or so. So the majority that were present voted in favor of the thing. But we didn't get our 60% vote, which was required. The reason for that was seniors stayed home, either because of the rain or because they hadn't been involved in the decision. And so until we get a survey, I, I wrote to the Council of Aging, suggested that they survey their people. I don't know whether they've ever done that, but it seems to me that there, there are five or six ideas around. Stay in the same place, which I would oppose. Go to the, the community center, which I might oppose. Go to Main Street. Certainly, we don't want to go back, back to the dump. So, you know, there are, there are ideas that people might be able to support, but they've got to find, there's got to be a unified group of people who, who express that this is the right place to be. And then you have to go on to what kind of a place do we want, which is the second question.
Great, all right. Sir, thanks so much. Very articulate. Again, this is exactly what we're looking for. What did we learn from this last experience? What can we do better this time? Jill, we have, anyone online who wants to answer this, respond to this question?
Yes, we have Meredith Fry, please.
Meredith, Meredith, welcome back.
Hi, Meredith Fry. I'm also the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Right.
At the community center.
Right.
And lessons we've learned from the past is we've already gone down the road of the community center as an option and it is not a feasible option for several reasons. There is talk of building onto the community center into our green space, which is a recreational space.
Meredith, I think we're talking about on this one of the two particular sites that we just looked at. But I would like you to come back for this, for the, for the next question though, in terms of where the senior center should, the new should be, new senior center should be located. So can you hold that thought for the next question?
I can't, but I just would, I keep hearing community center, community center. And I just want to know, lessons from the past? We've been in front of the whole community at the selectman's meeting and we've gone over why the community center is not a feasible. And even the COA itself does not want to be in the community center or part of it. If you go back to 2019, when we've already discussed all of this.
Okay. Meredith, I want you to come back also for question number three as well and go into a little bit more detail about the community center and your feelings about it.
Happily do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we have anybody else here in the annex who would like to speak? Yes, sir. Again, question two is what were the lessons learned from the previous proposed senior set of sites which are not approved? What can we do better this time?
Yeah, my name's David Mott.
David, welcome.
I'm a full-time resident here.
Great. How long you been in town, David?
I've owned properties since 2002. I retired here in 2018.
Okay, great.
So, and happily so. I guess as far as what can we do better the next time? It seems to me that when we're talking about multimillion-dollar investment, it probably goes a long way in selling that idea if we have a good idea of how many people it's going to affect. Gentleman who spoke earlier said seniors make up 56% of the population of, of Chatham. What's the distribution of that? How many of those are full-time residents versus seasonal residents? Seasonal residents aren't here in the wintertime. I don't recall, and this, this may be a failing on my part, but in the three years leading up to 2020, what was the usage of the current senior center? How many people were there per day? How many people were there per month? Can we do some sort of analysis which shows a pattern vis-à-vis the percentage of seniors in Chatham and what the usage of the center looked like? Having a, a solid understanding of that would rally me around whether or not there's, I mean, it's great to want something. The key thing is, do you need something? And statistics are gonna be what's going to drive that, I think, in many people's minds. It's a big investment. And I, I think it's important, if we go forward, as we go forward, and next time we want to bring this into the public eye, that we back it up with some statistic analysis. Thank you.
David, thank you so very, very much. We have another, another participant online, Jill?
Yes, Nancy Fields.
Nancy?
Hi again. I just want to say that I think an important lesson would be that there was a survey done of the entire town in, I think it was 2017 or 18, about what people wanted in a senior center, what kinds of activities, what kinds of services, that sort of thing. And I don't feel like the recent proposal that wasn't passed was tied very well in the public's mind to that survey and the results of that survey and what people said. I think the proposal, in the development of the proposal, it was tied. But in the public, in the publicity around the proposal, I don't think it was made that clear that a lot of what, you know, the, the proposal was, was in response to what people said they wanted.
Nancy, why don't you, why don't you talk about, can you talk about a couple of the major issues that, that were in the survey? of the major issues that were in the survey that failed in terms of what you're saying in terms of what people wanted?
I don't think off the top of my head I can do that justice, but I did go back a couple weeks ago and just looked at, it's available on the town website, the results of the survey. And I found it really interesting to see what people had to say about the usage of the building and that sort of thing. So I would encourage people to go back and see, you know, and I don't know, it's probably too soon to do another survey of the entire town. I mean, that costs money too. But I think that we do have a basis for, you know, what the needs are in this survey.
Okay. Nancy, thank you so much for, again, bringing that to our attention and that that survey's available to take a look at. Do we have other members in the annex, gentlemen, coming up here to the podium, to the microphone?
Good evening. My name is Peter Barry. I live in South Chatham.
Welcome, Peter.
And thank you. And we have owned for the last 20 years.
Great.
And we retired here five years ago.
Fantastic.
And it's the best decision we ever made in our lives.
Fantastic. Happy for you. So what did we learn?
So the question of response to your, what did we learn is, I think we need to step back and think about transparency. Because on a number of fronts, and someone else spoke to this, there are three reasons we failed on this thing. We failed because of an assessment that it was too costly, that it was too small, and it was in the wrong location. Couple that with the fact that we managed to have a meeting on an outdoor facility for elderly people to come with weather-threatening. I happen to be in that group, and if you had a wheelchair or a walker, you exited when you stepped one foot out of the car. You never went on that field. And then when people got up and spoke about issues specifically, they were only a short discussion, but I recall people getting up there saying, well, all the offices are, the rooms are on the second floor. How can that possibly work for a senior citizen? Well, no one got to rebut that by saying, well, those are where the officers of the COA work. That's not where the users of the facility will be. Or the fact that there was an elevator design built into that. And this changed the mind of people around me, saying, well, if that's the case, I'm not voting for this because I can't climb stairs. And it never got brought out. It was just let out there to people absorb if they wanted to. On another note, the discussion was about it being too costly. How can it be too costly if someone's donating us the land? Zero is as low as it goes. No one's, we're not going to reverse that in any way, shape, or form. Its location, a lot of people think is poor. I think it's a great location. It's on a bus route. It's those people that need the elderly to be able to get around, take the bus up to the library, take it up to the supermarket, and get back and forth. It's just a number of items like that that I think that have been misinterpreted, not the least of which is coming back to the cost scenario, and that is that they've hounded out there this $8.5 million expense to handle it. Well, the truth of the matter is, no one wants to discuss, except when the mic is turned off, that the building that we currently occupy is worth $1,000,300. And simple math would say, well, that should cut our price tag back to 6.5.
But another 20 seconds, Peter.
But that doesn't happen. They all say, we're saving that back pocket for a special day project. I dare them to say, that's not what transparency is about. You cannot have special projects. The real cost is much less. We need a free land, an underwritten facility, $1,000,300 that could be traded in against this eight.
Okay. Peter, thank you so very, very much.
Sorry.
No, thank you very much. Very articulate. Do we have any other calls online right now?
I would just like...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Welcome back.
I would just like to make a clarification on an earlier point.
Sure.
Someone mentioned about the number of seniors in this wonderful town of ours. The population is about 6,500 people, and those are permanent residents year-round. In the summer, we get a lot more, as everyone knows. There's many, many people that join us, and most of us stop going downtown because it's so crowded. But over 59% of that population of 60 is over 65 years old. We are the second oldest town in Massachusetts, so, and we're not getting any younger. At least I can attest to that.
Thank you so much for that clarification. Jill, do we have others online?
I have Robin Zeebrat.
Robin, welcome. Robin, welcome to the Senior Center Community Forum. Robin?
Yeah.
No? Okay. We have another, we have someone else?
I got it.
We have Robin. Robin, you on?
I'm here.
Okay, Robin, welcome.
Good evening.
Robin, what's your connection to Chatham?
Well, I'm going to tell you that I've lived here for 66 years, and I'm a lifelong resident, as well as my father and grandmother before me. So, and I have children here that now live here also.
Okay.
I have watched the senior center discussion for many, many years, and now I'm at the point where I need to use it. It was first in the, I remember, it was in the elementary school. It was then moved to the current building. That was an emergency-type situation and where we needed a place for the senior center to go. My family was involved in that purchase, but now it's too small. It does not accommodate anybody there. And I think one of the reasons that we have not been able to come to fruition with a new center is that we haven't made known how much usage the seniors get out of this, and how many people actually do use it, and what it could be used for. I agree that the piece of property that was donated to us had great feasibility. It does have, it is close to the bike path. It does have a conservation area next to it. And I think that it needed to have a little more effort into what it does have and not what it didn't have.
Okay. Thank you very, very much. Certainly a longtime resident. All right, we're going to have one more, this gentleman, coming up to speak here at the podium. Then we're going to take a couple of emails, Shawna, and then we're going to be going to question number three.
Hello. My name's Herb Bassett. My connection to Chatham actually goes back to the Mayflower and my wife's. Our four children were born on land, been in my family over 350 years. They were born at home.
Just a virtual wash, is that what?
So there's my pedigree. If I could beg your indulgence, we were watching this at home, and I was trying to use the telephone, so I couldn't get in on number one question. If you allow me a little bit of number one, I can do number two and still fit in the three minutes.
All right, we're going to do that.
Okay. I do believe a COA is needed due to demand by not only poor, but the more affluent people here in town. During COVID, over 600, and I say that again, 600 new people came to the COA for help. In some cases, the COA was their last resort. Things like language barriers interfered, but the COA found ways to get past those barriers. 600 people. To me, that's amazing in a town this size. They were helped. Language barriers and housing, all kinds of things were overcome with the people at the COA. That's number one.
Okay.
Number two, it's really obvious, people believe, or people believed that 1610, I'm not one of them because I was on the planning group for that, people did believe it was too expensive and too big. But we really came close to the 2/3 majority, and I want people to remember that. So, and that's my one and two right now.
All right, great.
I'll come back for number three.
We're looking forward to it. And sir, for someone who came over to the Mayflower, you're looking good, and you've got a lot of energy. I think everybody agrees with that. Shawna, let's take a couple emails, and then we're going to go to question number three.
Sure. One of the emails from Barbara, clearly the taxpayers do not want a Taj Mahal erected at a cost of $9 million. If more thought were given to the actual rather than purely potential uses, something smaller and more utilitarian might be achieved. From Frank, I believe, who's actually in the room with you, he wrote in that 1610 Main Street filled all the needs and met most of the concerns over the previous sites considered. It was the correct site. The fact that it did not obtain 2/3 of the town meeting is unfortunate. A significant number of people were not sure if the meeting was being held due to the weather, and it was raining just minutes before the start of the meeting. The town/COA needs to do a better job in scheduling the next town meeting to facilitate all the citizens of Chatham, especially senior citizens. The town/COA needs to do a better job in advocating for its decision and countering misinformation. And then through the community voice portal, what were the lessons learned? First, from each Chatham, too expensive, bad location, too large, bad lot shape requiring a two-story structure requiring more staff. And from Liz, what can we do better? Listen, there were many comments on the size and location which were ignored. Those are some of the comments received through the portal.
Shawna, thanks so much. For everybody who's watching, you're watching the Chatham Senior Center Community Forum, and you can, I'm going to say it again this time, participate through sending an email to communityforum@chatham-ma.gov. That's communityforum@chatham-ma.gov. All right, question number three, and I know that there's a lot, everybody's chomping at the bit to participate in this. Number three is, where should a new Chatham senior center be located? What's your reasoning? Shawna, let's start off with a couple emails for responding to question number three.
Sure. Number three, new senior center should be located exactly where the current one is. No need to spend millions on a new location and a new building. Chatham needs to learn a lesson here, and that is to utilize what we have and stop spending foolishly. Another is, I propose that the town purchase the Chatham Swim Club for use by senior citizens. Swimming isn't exercise. People who can't otherwise walk can do well. Stairs are a real challenge to seniors. Activity rooms should be on the first floor and offices on the second. Having offices on the second floor afford more privacy, too. Another input, where should the new senior center be located? Anywhere in Chatham except attached to the community center and the recreation area. It's a small town and can be easily reached by most citizens. There is no perfect location.
Okay, let's stop you right there, and let's take some, we've got a couple people who lined up here to speak at the annex, and a gentleman is coming up to the microphone.
I haven't been called a gentleman in a long time. Thank you.
Well, you're calling you a gentleman.
My name is Peter Gruel. I've been a resident of Chatham part-time since 1977 and full-time since 2010. I retired here, and like many of you before, I am very thankful I did. So I'm very glad to be here. I'm one of the members of the group. You've heard various references to, we call, we like to call ourselves a think tank. It's an association of six members that approached the COA and said, let us do some homework. And we did. And we spent hundreds of hours, if you combine the time each of us has spent, not only discussing the issue here before us, doing what research we could, but also out in the field, visiting the other community centers on the Cape and getting some feel, how did they deal with these problems? What did they, what did they face when their challenges came up? Where did they put it? And as a group, we have come to a conclusion that particularly because of the issue of cost, and how do you bring costs into a reasonable range, that we can afford to build it, that makes sense, and yet gives us something special in this town, that there is only one logical solution, and that is the community center. I know this has been visited before. I know that there are lots of sensitive issues relative to green space and children and things. All of them are addressable. It makes all the sense in the world that the facilities that we can share with the community center, the cost that we can reduce, my goodness, from 1610 alone, we save $1 million in site costs, just site preparation costs, not the cost of the site. It was free, but it cost. This stuff, we'd save that $1 million right off the bat. Think of the use of the rooms, the facilities, the gym, the aerobics rooms, the exercise rooms, all the game rooms downstairs. All those facilities are available to be shared with a community center that is located nearby. Doesn't mean that they take it over. It doesn't mean we put any pressure on the use with the people that are using it now, especially the young people. If you talk to anyone who runs the community center, has been involved in it, they will tell you it is not utilized to its full capacity. This is an opportunity for us to take now. We have a slogan that we've been kind of kicking around. We call it Build It Smart. Well, the smart thing is, is we can bring the cost down of building this facility. We can put it in the right place in town, at the center of the town, with everything, and be a part of the community, just like the rest of the seniors are, a part of the community. This is a facility that makes sense, and six people have done some homework, addressed the issues, and we're willing to do everything we can to support the Council on Aging in making this happen. Thank you.
Peter, thank you so very much for a very articulate response. I'm going to go to Meredith, because I promised her that she could start off online on question three. So Meredith, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay. I promised, and you're back.
Okay, thank you. Meredith Frye, Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'd like to speak about the community center. We have visited this location before, and I don't think the six people working group is representative of the town. We, building onto the community center is fundamentally wrong. We have green space that we use for our rec programs, our summer programs. You want to take that away from our community and our children. We have several classes that are run outside. Also, we have the anglers' field right there, and that green space is used all summer long. And we also have runoff of the anglers' camps. The community center is not the appropriate location. It's one way in, one way out, and if anyone in that working group has ever stepped foot in there when it's active, you could see that it would be chaos. The community center is for the community, and the COA is welcome to use our facility for exercise, for classes. We have chair yoga. We have pickleball. We have dancing classes, exercise classes. We have meeting rooms, which the COA is more than welcome to use. But to build onto the community center and take away our field space, our green space, from our community is wrong. You have a building, an existing building, which can completely be renovated and used and bust people in and out. And you can have a collaborative effort with the community by going to the community center, but not taking it away from the community or our children. And also, the swim club is also a viable option. We've always wanted a pool. We could actually have swimming lessons there for the community as well. I don't know if it's still for sale, but that is also an option. And there are plenty of other options in town besides smushing it into a community center that cannot handle the traffic. It cannot handle the space.
Okay.
And the seashore honestly deserves more. They deserve more than to be added on to the community center. It's not the right decision.
Okay. Thank you so much, Meredith. We have some other participants here, a couple more coming up here, ma'am, in the annex. Question number three is, again, is where should a new Chatham senior center be located, and what's your reasoning for it?
First, I have to see, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I'm Ann Timson, and we've owned property here since 1952, and I am a full-time resident. I would love to have a few more minutes because I forfeited speaking on any of the other questions, but I'll do my very best to do the three minutes.
Three minutes, and you can always come back. Just to remind everybody, we will have question number five, is what else you'd like us to know. So that's be an opportunity to speak about any subject. So go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Everyone appreciates the time, research, and work you have all put into the search for the perfect site for our seniors. I would like to revisit discussions started in November 218 proposing the construction of a new CO center at the community center site. From the inception, this project has been skewed by an overzealous estimate of Chatham seniors and their needs at a CO center in Chatham. If one takes the premise that 4,000 to 5,000 square feet would be ample for the proposed footprint plan for a new COA center addition, then the footprint plan for a new COA center addition, then the community center is the ideal location. There will be no need to eliminate a ball field nor encroach on an historical sand pit referred to as the Gaga Pit. If it is the goal, and it should be, to keep this capital project as tightly fiscally supervised as possible, then an addition directly attached at the rear of the community center would be the least costly option, using much of the unutilized existing square footage in the present building. This construction would be based on a plan which attaches a two-story addition directly to the reception desk wall of the present community center. It would extend three-quarters of the way along the gymnasium wall. The main entrance would remain in the glassed-in lobby and could be moved to the center of the front of the lobby, as the new COA wing would project enough to give weather protection. The COA addition would have entrances on both first and second floors. First-floor entrance with double doors would be located on wall behind the present reception desk. Second-floor entrance would be accessed by taking existing elevator up one floor and traversing a gallery pedestrian walkway with ADA-approved width and metal railing, creating a dramatic two-story architectural feature to the main entrance. Construction would be simple, as there's only a glass wall adjacent to the elevator where walkway platform would be installed. The ceiling of lobby would be easily reconfigured, as it is made up of drop panels supported by a floating grid. A second, less expensive design option.
Another 20 seconds.
Well, then I'm going to start reading why we—this would be advantageous. We already have an elevator on site which serves all floors. The cost of new elevator would be in excess of $250,000. We already have a lower level that is spacious with windows on three sides, and underutilized at present. This level has a finished game room, poolrooms, large ADA, bathrooms.
Why don't I just stop you right there, and I invite you back to—because we want to keep everybody—is—to be able to give everybody the opportunity to speak, but I invite you back for question five.
It's hard to keep to the three minutes, considering you're asking for—
Okay, well, can we take—a—let's go on to online, Jill?
Sure. And just a reminder for those participating by phone, you're muted, so press star six to unmute. We have Elaine Gibbs.
Elaine, welcome. Yes, thank you.
Welcome to the community forum.
I appreciate it. I wasn't going to speak, but I think that the community center was never actually vetted. It was dismissed very quickly when there were other opportunities. I think the first step is to look at it. It's a 22,000-square-foot building, and I don't think anyone can disagree. It is totally unutilized. I was there at 11 o'clock, and there were only two people in the entire building, and they were both employees. I know that there are times where there are more people there, but it's a matter of scheduling. Each floor in the brick part of the building is 5,300 square feet. The lower level is completely finished. All three levels have male and female bathroom facilities, handicap access. Those are all the things that make buildings cost a lot of money, in addition to elevators. I think that the first step is to get a floor plan of what is actually in there, get a schedule of programs that can be shared, to determine whether or not an addition is even necessary. I think that the trade-off to green space—I don't think green space has to be taken. I don't think anyone—if we have an intergenerational community center, which many, many communities are doing now, where everybody can use it, first of all, during the day, children are in school, and those are normally the hours that the senior center would be in operation. They are close to downtown, the theater, the library, restaurants, and, most importantly, unlike the last location, they're within 500 yards of the fire department in the event of a medical emergency. So I would not summarily dismiss it. I think that $8 million versus rescheduling programs is a good trade-off. I think that we can do it for a lot less, and I think people would be very happy. We have to remember, we also have an elementary school that's 54,000 square feet, and the future of that is under discussion. Scott Carpenter said, "Within 10 years, we're going to have to build a new school." I don't see how we can justify building a new building when we have a community center that could also be used as emergency preparedness, and therefore have perhaps get some funding from grants on the federal level, so that it could serve the entire community. So those are just thoughts off the top of my head, but I don't—I don't think people should write it off and say that seniors aren't welcome there.
Another 20 seconds.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very, very much. We have a couple other people here at the annex who would like to speak and give their ideas on where the senior center should be located.
Herb Bassett again. The town—I'm going to—I'm very happy that the previous speaker used two words that I thought was going to get me into trouble, and those two words are "elementary school." It was looked at, and if we can't keep an elementary school in this town, what are we going to do with the building? That's pretty obvious. It hits you right in the face, to me. The original building is not ADA-compliant. I can't get up the stairs because of my buddy here. I can get up him, but coming down can be quite exciting. And for other people who have to use a cane as well. We do need a new building. If you go back to the town meeting where we talked about putting a COA on Middle Road, I spoke very much against it. And if you go back and look at that meeting, you'll see that I spoke in favor of looking at the community center, because I believe then and do now, anytime you can put older generation in contact with younger generations, everybody benefits. And that's my main reason that I wanted to look at the community center. So I'm on record years ago for saying that's worth a shot. And that's it for number three. I'll be back for number four.
We're looking forward to it. All right, let's take another call online, Jill.
I did see Nancy Fields, but I'm not sure if she put her hand—
Nancy, are you back? If not—
I just lowered my hand. I have lots of concerns about retrofitting buildings. I don't have any cost data, but given what we've just been through the last going on two years now, we know that HVAC would have to be wildly upgraded to accommodate all of the vulnerable seniors who use the senior center. So I think that people who are saying that the community center is a very low-cost alternative might not be considering some things that would really need to be done that would be very expensive.
Nancy, do you have a suggestion for if it's not the community center, where else it could go?
Well, I was a proponent of 1610. I voted yes, so that would be my preference, but—and another thing about the community center is, in the summer, getting in and out of there is a real problem, in my opinion. The traffic, you know, both the car traffic and then people walking, you know, through the parking entrance on the sidewalk there. I think it's really dangerous, but I liked 1610.
Okay, thank you so much. We welcome back—
Joan Craig.
Joan, back to the microphone here in the annex.
Yes, thank you. I won't repeat what a number of individuals have already said about positivity with regards to the community center, except to say a few things. And as I said previously, it is done throughout Massachusetts, making them even what they're calling living skills or life centers, where they do collaborate and have that intergenerational bent to them. The areas that we mentioned that are underutilized, it's my understanding that there is also a full kitchen down in the lower level. With regards to the property and the entry and exit, it's true. It is a nightmare. I have to thank the board and others for just putting up the simple one-way sign when one goes into the community center. I think that has helped tremendously, but I certainly think architecturally, other ways for entry and exit could be appropriate. With regards to green space, I know that was initially one of the very, very first issues that individuals on this board and others were concerned about. If you remember, one of the properties that was mentioned was the property at the middle school, and there is additional green space there where someone wanted to put up the possibility of the COA, and that green space could easily be utilized for any—for any activities that would be missing if we did take green space from behind the community center. As mentioned, the design could include separate entries for the seniors. Certainly, that we have elevators is very, very important. Many of us seniors already use the services of the community center, and I think expansion in that regard is something that we definitely should look at. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Jill, we have somebody else online?
Yes, we do, and just for the audience to know, we have 49 participants participating remotely. So we have Robin Zbrat.
Okay, Robin.
I'm back again.
Welcome back.
I have a couple concerns about the community center being used.
How come?
Number one is the traffic. Traffic in and out of there is horrendous. In the summer, we run the summer programs for the children. As a grandmother, I have been there. I have tried to get my grandchildren in and out safely. It is very difficult. There's no place to park. There are people running all over the place, and the exit onto Main Street is often blocked. I don't think we have enough parking there. I am past president of the Chatham Women's Club. When we have a meeting there, we don't have enough places for us to park there. So I'm wondering how much you think can be utilized for someone else having a meeting there, because there just isn't enough space for the parking. I'm concerned about that. My other concern is there is not a full kitchen in the community center. There is a half-kitchen upstairs and a small one downstairs. The new center would have to have a full-grade commercial kitchen built into it, which is extremely expensive, so I don't think that we're saving any money on that area with adding on to the community center.
Okay, Robin, thanks so much. Do we have anybody else here in the annex? We have one gentleman who's going to be coming back. And then we're going to take—we'll take one more online, and we'll take a couple more emails, because pretty soon we're going to be going to question number four. Sir, welcome back.
You're probably getting tired of hearing from me.
I'm not getting tired of you at all. The rest of the people, I don't know, but I'm not getting tired of you at all.
I've got to say, the using the community center was never really presented to me or to many of the group. And if there is an intelligent design, which is cost-effective, then clearly that needs to be looked at. If it's not feasible, then that, too, will put an end to that. And, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about whether this is a good idea or a bad idea. There are needs for green space. That's got to be considered, and that design should be intelligently—should take in consideration for those children that play out there, certainly during the summer. The place on Main Street has its advantages, and that has been—we've had a fairly expensive design consideration for that. There are concerns about that, that it didn't meet some of the needs of a Council on Aging, but, you know, we're all trying to hold our pennies, and as a taxpayer, everyone here is concerned about that. So if this illustrious committee has a good idea and has come up with a reasonable design and cost estimate, well, I'd love to hear it. Thank you.
Okay, well-stated, and we're looking forward to you coming back on the next two questions, too. We all are. All right, Jill, do we have one more on online? Okay. Shauna, how about a couple emails that we've received?
Sure. From the Westgates, "With almost 11 acres in the middle of town adjacent to rescue services, the community center is an ideal location. It would take some adjustments of personnel and scheduling, together with the challenge to architects, to maximize the use of this property. This would consist of reconfiguring some of the existing rooms and a small addition to accommodate staff with private offices and visiting professionals. For example, the small conference room on the first floor might be converted to offices. Many of the town committees now choose venues other than the community center for their meetings. Importantly, a kitchen would permit community functions as well as meals provided to seniors." Another in favor of the community center says, "I think adjacent and attached to the community center is the perfect place for an addition that could be the senior center. There are so many reasons. The community center is woefully underutilized, and many of its obvious attributes would meld with needs of seniors, such as the gym, the fitness room, and the aerobics room. Elevators are already in place. That location is closer to downtown for all those who don't like the idea of seniors being pushed out into the wilderness of west or north Chatham. A curb cut onto Depot Road would provide less congested access during the 10 weeks of summer. There is already a large number of parking spaces available at that location. The land is level and wouldn't require much site work, saving money, and there is enough room for a building sufficient in size without interfering with the present use of the ball fields or playground. Scaling down the size of the building to fit in with the existing elements of the community center should result in a lower price tag, which will appeal to the taxpayers. For a town the size of ours, I do not think a 9,000-square-foot building is warranted, and evidently neither do the majority of our voters." Through the Community Voice Portal, there is, again, support for the community center.
Okay, thank you, Shauna. "With the wilderness of North Chatham," you think William Nickerson recognized that? Was he the first one who said that several hundred years ago? All right, you are watching the Chatham Senior Center Community Forum. You can participate through communityforum@chatham-ma.gov. We're going to be going to question number four now. Oh, do we have—is this one more about location?
The community center, as I understand it, is—used to be the old intermediate school, and—
Can you put the—the microphone closer to you?
The community center, as I understand it, is the old intermediate school. And at the old intermediate school, there was a huge kitchen downstairs in the basement of the school, and it was a complete cafeteria. I don't know where that has gone. I don't know what the talk is about a small kitchen downstairs. As I understand it, there's a large kitchen downstairs. So just for your information, FYI. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to go to question four right now, and that is—question number four, drum roll, please. What type of new program—again, we've talked about, do you want a new senior center? Yes or no? What did we learn from the past couple experiences? Where should it go? We've had some reasons pro, some reasons con. Okay, well, going forward, what type of new programming amenities would you like to see at the senior center? And Shauna, why don't you read a couple emails we've received?
Sure. From Roz, "Hire staff to design and offer programs that connect seniors with opportunities that already exist in Chatham. The Council on Aging would designate a taxpayer stipend to partially pay for subscriptions so that participating Chatham businesses receive full value while seniors get a cost break. Transportation will be provided as needed or optional depending on the group. For example, work with the Orpheum to design a movie club for which seniors can subscribe. Work with Chatham Restaurants to design a dining club to which a senior can subscribe. Work with Parks and Recreation to provide senior beach days. And work with the Conservation and Chatham Conservation Foundation to design natural resources exploration."
Great, all right, so—go ahead.
Another from Chris, Christopher. He was part of the 365 Task Force, and one major request that came out of that was for a town pool. If you want to see voter—if you want to see votes for a new senior center, particularly from those in younger age categories, you'll have to join it to something they can buy into. A town pool is something that can be a cradle-to-grave activity center. It joins together the ideas of combining senior activities with those from youth without trying to attach it to the school system, which will never be tenable.
Okay, I would like to invite any members from the participants, from our audience here in the annex, to get up and speak on question number four.
Herb Bassett for number four.
We've missed you.
People are gregarious by nature. We need to hang out and spend time with— We need to hang out and spend time with each other. That's part of our species. So there are many programs the COA can provide that allows people to gather together in small or large groups to be with each other. People who isolate often find themselves subject to such debilitating diseases as major depression. And that can take you down a very bad slope. Things like cooking classes, I think, are real important. Having spent many years in the home health care field, a lot of men were not allowed in their wives' kitchens. You won't get them to admit it out loud, but I saw it time after time. And if the woman passes away, the guy's left there not having a clue because his wife wouldn't let him cook or wouldn't teach him how to cook. So there are a lot more men who cannot cook than you might think. My wife and I had arrangement when we both worked full-time, whoever got home first out of dinner. And it worked very, very well. But a lot of men did not have that opportunity. So there's a lot of different programs that the COA can provide to the older people. Otherwise, older men especially will wind up eating out of cans, meals on wheels if they're lucky. But their nutritional diet is going to be very, very poor and that contributes to their ill health and heart disease with high concentrations of sodium in canned food, all kinds of things. Continuing to work on our outreach, to make sure that we have contact with older people who are living at home alone is a crucial part of what the COA can and should continue to do. That's number four. I'll be back for number five.
We can't wait. And Herb, you talk about hanging out with people. I want to hang out with you. I'll tell you that right now. Jill, we have some participants online who want to respond to this question?
No, just a reminder, it's star six to unmute your phone. Thank you.
Okay. John, welcome back.
Thank you. Just a reminder, I live in the west Chatham wilderness, which I love. And to another speaker, I had written, let's think outside the box and consider a town pool on the property. I've spoken to a number of individuals who are actively involved in the community center and were disappointed when there was some renovations a number of years ago that a pool was not part of that. And this is a popular venue, as mentioned, for all ages and could be utilized in the early hours by not only our seniors, but our preschoolers with their moms and dads and additionally by our youth and others during the after-school hours and then those who are in the workforce still. It could be a plan for activities after hours after dinner. And with regards to, again, the whole expansion piece and the green space, you really need to take a look when you're at the senior center of the poor setup of the current parking situation. So look at that. And yes, it does get crowded, but it could be better. It could be much better with or without taking green space. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have others online, Jill? No? Okay. Gentlemen coming up to the podium right now.
When you think of a senior center, it is a place where people are supposed to gather and enjoy themselves. And one of the surprising things was we recently had a power failure in town and my cellphone was, of course, running out because like an idiot, I hadn't charged it. And so I went down to the senior center and I was told I had 15 minutes because they were going to close. Now, here's a facility that we've paid, that some, a citizen of the town gave us $50,000 to build a generator and make it available for emergencies. And here's a building that we say is our senior center and it is unusable after 4:00. Now, I taught Excel and Word processing for, in the classes, we've got a large room upstairs in the existing thing in which we built a computer room. And it's a very nice room. It's probably one of the best facilities in that building. When I offered to teach that class, most of the people who wanted to learn it were working and they wanted to come after the senior center closed. So, you know, when you think about a senior center, if you want to get together of an evening, you know, most of us, I'm English, so we used to go to the pub. But you can't go to a pub and sit here in this country because they keep on making you have another drink. So a place where you could go and feel comfortable and sit on the couch and chat with friends, the current senior center, you know, the current place just doesn't provide that kind of atmosphere. Now, the last thing is, there was a big debate about what do we do with people who are disabled and are mentally disabled. They're suffering from Alzheimer's and they have a caregiver who's looking after this person 24 hours a day and needs a break. Right now, we ship these people to Orleans. That's Chatham's solution. By the way, Orleans pays $114 per senior citizen to maintain the center over there.
About another 20 seconds.
Chatham pays a grand total of $74. So, I mean, it's quite an astounding difference. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that statistic. Anybody online, Jill?
I have Meredith Frye.
Okay, Meredith, welcome back.
Hi, hello, Meredith Frye.
Long time, no speak.
Parks and Rec Commission, I just wanted to comment on programs for seniors.
Great.
The community center is, would welcome any programs, ideas for the seniors and would welcome the seniors to come and participate and use the facility. Again, the community center is not the location for the COA, but we welcome any senior to come and develop new programs, again, and use our facility, but it is not the proper location for the COA.
Okay, Meredith. Do we have any other members of the audience here in the annex who would like to address question number four? Anybody online?
We have an EJ McKenna.
EJ, welcome back.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to mention that I also felt that the swimming pool, the idea for a swimming pool would be wonderful. As someone who's had to go over to the woodlands to swim in Brewster, I think that would be a wonderful addition for all ages in Chatham if that could be worked in. Two, I think that any facility that we're looking at, in light of the current climate in the, with the pandemic, needs to have good iteration and a lot of seniors are not anxious to go back into small enclosed spaces. So we should be thinking of that as we go forward. And then three, I know of several people who have had to take older, their older family members to daycare and respite services in Orleans. So I think there is a need for services in that area.
Okay, EJ, thanks so much. Anybody else online, Jill?
No.
Okay. Shawna, can we have a couple emails?
Sure. Some comments through the Community Voice portal. What type of new programming and amenities would you like to see at the senior center? None. They have more than enough programs. They can take advantage of many other clubs in town for socialization. Also, it should serve as an emergency warming and charging station for the entire community. It must be a multipurpose building, not solely dedicated to seniors. And the current program offering is limited. I would like engaging speakers not on grieving death and dying or cooking. Offer walking tours such as Montemoy birdwatching or identification of native trees. Offer senior groups tours to local museums. Have a senior day at the elementary school, quote, unquote, adopt a senior. Someone with creativity at the COA needs to develop engaging programs. We are not all 90 years old yet. Through email, we have from Usha. Lectures, movies, and presentations by many local residents who have impressive backgrounds. Recruit volunteer high school students for one-on-one help with computer literacy and other multiple advances in technology, including climate change, pandemics, artificial intelligence, private space travel, et cetera. There's no lack of interesting topics.
Thank you, Shawna. Again, you're watching the Chatham Senior Center Community Forum and you can participate at the community forum@chatham-ma.gov. Leads us to our fifth and final question. And that is, what else would you like us to know about the senior center? What else do you want to tell the select board about it? It can be any of the questions that we've covered or something new. Do we have anybody here in the audience? Yes. And, Anne, we want you to come up and be able to finish what you were saying before. Okay?
Thank you all for this opportunity. It has really been a very, very worthwhile evening for me. One of the things that I mentioned here is, as has been mentioned, collaboration between all age groups and intergenerational cooperation and activities is a positive, not a negative, with one, when one considers a true community/senior center or whatever we want to call it. This can be done and should be pursued. This would also allow the opportunity for the Park and Rec Department to look forward to being a part of the planning process for a new center. They haven't complained openly, anyway, about what they're lacking. And I think if we take a real good look at the collaboration between the Council on Aging, this board, and the Park and Rec Department, as well as the school committee, because we can collaborate with them on that free space up there that some individuals wanted as an alternative for a senior center. That is space that's not being utilized right now. So that is free green space that could be used, too. That's it. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much. Jill, we have someone online?
No, no one online.
Okay. Anne, if you'd like to come up and speak?
All I'm going to do is read you the advantages of a plan that would either add a small addition onto the community center, two stories, or possibly even one story. Or if you want to give all that up, you get the pool and you have to use the existing building, I think, in order to create something that isn't going to start costing eight to $9 million again. Anyway, in my mind, the advantages are, we already have an elevator on site, which serves all three floors. The cost of new elevator would be in excess of $250,000, not including installation and yearly maintenance. We already have a lower level that is spacious with windows on three sides and it's underutilized at present. This level has a finished game and pool room, large ADA bathrooms, which we also have on the other two levels, all finished and ready to go. Small kitchen and three large TV screens and two large conference rooms. At present, this space is used on weekdays by 14 children, 90% of whom do not live in Chatham or Harwich. They arrive at 3:45 on weekdays. The square footage could be easily modified for multi-generational uses and our present COA center closes at 4:00. Keep that in mind. A fully equipped exercise room is in place and sparsely occupied. Today, at 11:00, there was no one there. A few days ago, when I went at 11:00, still no one there. Main floor and second floor, large and small conference rooms are underutilized, including a large lecture room, which is similar in size to the architect Bargman's style multipurpose room. Adjacent to that room is a serving room, half of which could be reconfigured into an addition to the kitchen, which is right next to it. You could even have a counter arrangement so you could pass food through. You could put some tables and chairs there and have coffee and donuts, whatever, and lunch as well. The existing entrance from parking area could remain as the main entrance for both the present community center and the new COA addition. Site is flat and requires no complicated grading, keeping construction costs lower and construction time faster. There is plenty of existing parking for a four-to-five-square-foot footprint addition and that would save extensive funding for asphalt and gravel and other drainage infrastructure requirements for new road configurations and construction. There is parking for 108 cars right now. And in addition, parking...
Anne, I'll give you an extra minute, too.
Parking for special club and group events could be scheduled for 4:00 PM or on weekends when the COA center is historically closed. I don't have time to add all these other concepts, but it would make a great warming center. And FEMA has been known to fund and grant a warming center. So, and we need one, anyway. We just had another storm. The community center was originally designed to adapt a further architectural addition. Heating and cooling systems are already in place and well-located to hook up to additional construction, saving hundreds of thousands. Wiring for a generator is already in place, just waiting for permanent installation of a generator presently stored at the fire station. Attaching the new construction to the existing building minimizes heat loss as one wall remains unexposed to outside weather. This is another major cost saver during construction and for future years.
Okay, Anne, I'm going to stop you right there. Thank you for being so meticulous and very thoughtful. Do we have anybody else online?
We have Stephen Buckley.
Steve, welcome. Stephen, welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. And Steve, what's your connection to Chatham?
I grew up here.
Well, it's good.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm starting my three-minute timer.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Let's see if we can, if we're consistent. Go ahead.
Okay. Something that I think you need, that people would like to know, not just myself, is of all the studies that were done, and there's a link in the announcement to this forum, where there lists about five different documents that somebody could pull up and educate themselves if they wanted to. But I think it would be very helpful if things, options, if those studies had already looked at the community center, to what extent, whether they need to be updated, so forth and so on. Those are the things that, you know, can bring everybody up to speed who hasn't been intimately involved over the past five years. And that would be helpful. The other thing is that I would suggest that, yes, if it hasn't been, if it's not covered under those studies about possibility of using some part of the community center, then I would suggest that. And before talking about adding on to it, I'm curious why, if it's not being utilized now, is there something, I would like to know from the Council on Aging, why they're not using the space now? Simply because it's not in the existing senior center? Is there some problem with logistics or something? I guess I'd like to, that would be a big question for me and I would think for other people. Why, is there something preventing that from being used now? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Stephen. We have somebody else here in the, in the annex audience?
Hello.
Welcome.
My name is Pamela Special and my family's been here since 1984. And I love living in Chatham. What I'd like to address is programming. I represent the younger side of the seniors, I think, because I'm still working. I came here after work. There is very little for me to do at night in Chatham. There's nothing going on at the senior center. The library has very few programs.
We're having an echo. There we go? I'm sorry, go ahead.
You know, there's, I would love to see more programming, more lectures, more interactive things on the weekends at nights in the, in the community center. I went over to the community center to see what I might sign up for when, a while ago. And the only thing that was happening at night was pickleball.
What other activities would you like?
Lectures. Somebody mentioned, you know, we've got a very rich, culturally rich community here with all kinds of different interests. And I have been to the library where authors from Chatham were talking about the books they've written or work that they had done. I think we had somebody from the CIA talking about his experiences at the CIA. Just all kinds of different things we need. Just all kinds of different things we need. Also, a swimming pool. I would love to be doing laps at night after work. That would be really wonderful. And I know when the community center was discussed back in the 80s, they, the pool idea was dismissed as being too costly. I think that was a huge lost opportunity. We have children who could be on a swim team, seniors who can be doing exercises, doing laps, just providing more physical activity and community spirit. Get people together outside of 8 to 4, the current hours of the COA are now. I think that's it.
Great. Thank you so very much. Jill, we have somebody else online?
We have Meredith Frye.
Meredith, welcome back again. Yes, Meredith, welcome back.
Hi, Meredith Frye, Chairman of Parks and Recreation Commission. I just want to leave by saying the community center was looked at as an option in 2019. It was vetted. It was found that that was not the proper location for the COA. And again, the COA did not even want to be in the community center or attached to the community center. There is a huge traffic problem there, especially in the summertime--
Let's have some quiet. Everybody, please, give her the opportunity to speak. Thank you. Go ahead, Meredith.
Get in or out. Also, all I keep hearing is elevator, elevator. I mean, that's not a reason to smush the COA into the community center. And I don't think it's fair to say it's underutilized in COVID. Of course, it's underutilized in COVID right now. It was shut down for almost a year, and now it's slowly coming back. And we are welcoming any suggestions for programming programs. Again, we welcome all ages to come attend the community center, to work out in the workout room, but it is not the appropriate place for the COA. It's not fair to the seniors, either.
Meredith, thank you very much. I think we get your message.
I, so--
It's okay. We have somebody else here approaching the podium?
Good evening. My name is Tim Dinge. I've been in Chatham 10 years.
Great.
I live with my mom, who's been here 25-plus years. And you wanted to know other things you should know about the senior center. I consider, even though neither of us have directly participated in the programs at the senior center, we have definitely benefited from the advice and counseling in terms of medical advice and financial advice and, you know, as far as taxes and that sort of thing. My personal experience was trying to negotiate the internet and get an appointment for a COVID-19 vaccine. I spent three hours fruitlessly trying to negotiate the state, the Barnstable County, and several other websites, when I finally called Mandy Spellman, who spent 20 minutes on the phone and walked me through, using her computer, walked me through the application process at CVS, which was quite extensive, but I ended up with an appointment the next morning. So that's what else the senior center provides. I will comment on the fact that I thought at the 2019 town meeting, we had decided that a renovation of the current senior center was not an option. And I'm wondering why people are still trying to revisit that. I have been from the start and still am a proponent of 1911 Maine. I understand why people have misgivings about that decision. Obviously, it's not a majority of the people, but we didn't get our 60%, so there are enough that don't agree with that. As far as the community center goes, I'm willing to look at that. And I think, I haven't looked closely enough at it yet, but I will go down there tomorrow and take a look. But as far as parking and access problems go, I think it seems to me that in the northeast corner of that parking lot could be expanded, and you could run another entrance between the playground and the filling station property up to Depot Street, and that would alleviate the single access, point of access problem. As far as infringing on the playground--
But another 20 seconds.
--and the green space, we do have another playground directly across the street at the elementary school, so I think we could kind of accommodate that between the two. And the parking issue also, parking in the summertime at the elementary school would be an option.
Great, great perspective, great alternatives. Jill, we have others online?
We have Elaine Gibbs.
Elaine, welcome. Back again?
Yes, thank you. I think this has been very positive. I think there have been a lot of good ideas. I just want to reiterate that the community center belongs to the taxpayers of Chatham and not the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. It is also not 2019. It was not vetted completely in 2019. We're basically starting from scratch. And I would like everyone, including all the committees in town, to have an open attitude about where things can go and what can be done. We have to start thinking outside of the box and thinking about what we can do in terms of scheduling. As an example, the lower level is used only from 3:45 to 5:30. 5,000 square feet are ready to go for the parks program. It's for K through 4, or fourth grade, after school. So the question would be, could that be relocated to the elementary school and free up 5,000 square feet of finished space? So to just say, we thought about it, we welcome you. It is our building. Of course, we're welcome there. And it's time for us to think outside of the box. And I hope everyone will do that, including other committees. Thank you very much.
Great, great suggestion, Elaine. Thank you. Do we have somebody? Yes, yes, absolutely. We can't finish tonight without Herb coming back for question five. We just simply won't. So, go ahead, Herb.
Fifth and final time, and probably the shortest, I want to say that as my wife and I age out, it's good to know that the service is available to us and we plan to use them, because we're going to have to. It's that simple. Tax services are available through the COA. Legal services are available. I would hope that a expanded COA building would allow us further opportunity to access other services. And that's important. I do know that, and this really gets me, in one of the letters to the selectmen, a person wrote that they were disgusted by the idea of spending money on a COA center and thought that the seniors were a bunch of, let's see right here, we're a bunch of selfish, greedy people. I don't like that. I'm not a selfish person, and you ask anybody who knows me, and I think they'll tell you the same. The seniors here on Cape Cod represent a huge financial machine when it comes to giving to nonprofit organizations. Without us, many of them would not exist. The last count my wife and I gave to up to 12 nonprofit organizations depending on their need and our own budget. So calling seniors selfish is the last thing I'd want anybody to hear. Thank you.
And I will never call you selfish, sir, I'll tell you that. Okay. Jill, we have somebody else online?
No, we don't.
Okay. Next gentleman.
Yeah, just to refresh your memory, I'm Dave Mott.
Dave.
You know, I'll try not to take three minutes, but one of the things that's pretty obvious, should be pretty obvious to everyone here, is that there still isn't a consensus on the location of where the senior center should be. And I think that needs to be a priority, regardless of what type of senior center is going to be built, how extensive it's going to be, how many square feet, what's it going to cost. I think the key thing that we need to start with is, at a base, is where is it going to be located? You know, right now, the cost of construction is at an all-time high, construction materials, all-time high, if you can get them at all. And from everything that I've read in the construction trades, the supply chain issues are not going to stop until well into 2022. So we have a window of opportunity to focus on achieving at least one goal. And hopefully, that goal would be, where is the senior center going to be? And toward that, I guess we have to look at, where are our seniors located? Are they in the outlands of West Chatham? Are they here in downtown Chatham? Are they in, they're probably spread out, but where are the bulk of them? You know, we don't want to put a senior center where everyone has to travel to it. I agree that there are a number of, to have it downtown, there are a number of ancillary benefits to that, whether it is movies at the theater, whether it's the lectures at the library, which are really very good, and they're not just by authors, they're on all sorts of things. I think we need to gather the community to fulfill some of the services that we're talking about here that the senior center can provide. There's a lot of resource here in Chatham, and it's just unfortunate that we spend so much time in conflict about these issues. So hopefully, what you'll take away from this is, let's try a Swiss cheese approach here and at least focus on one thing and get it right, and get a consensus on that. That's all I have to say.
Dave, thanks so much. You brought up some, we're facing some hard doses of reality. We have another participant here from the annex tonight?
Yes, good evening. My name is Georgia Mazarakas, and I am a 31-year resident as a summer and seasonal resident of Chatham. And in addition to that, I have been working as a volunteer with the Chatham Anglers for 19 years. I run the Bat Boy program right now, and I'm intimately familiar with the field, especially during the nine-week period that the Anglers are in town. And I do know that there is plenty of space for everyone. I do not think, in my honest opinion, that any kind of proposal that would have been mentioned by the group that we're working with, you know, the group of six, if you will call us that, the think-tank team, that those proposals were very modest. And as Elaine Gibbs said, and I would echo, I'd like to have everyone start to try to work together and think outside the box, because there's a win-win here for everyone. There's no way that we, as a community, should ignore the opportunity to get this through. I feel that we have a situation where it's almost like three strikes, you're out. And we're close to that now, because everybody has tried so many different things, and they've all come to naught. So personally, I would like to see the senior center in some way, shape, or form in the community center environment, and I think can be accomplished without a burden to the children, the green space, and et cetera. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Very articulate. And I can speak for everybody, that we certainly all hope that next year, finally, the Anglers win the championship.
That's right.
All right. Do we have anybody else online?
No, and just a reminder for those on the phone to use star 6 to unmute if you want to speak. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to have one more gentleman speak in here.
Sorry to come back, but--
We're happy to have you back, sir.
I like to qualify things. Someone said that the Council of Aging doesn't use the Citizen Center. That's not true. We had a men's group, and we found it was impossible to continue to meet at the Council of Aging because of space restrictions and noise. We call it the Old Funny-Duty Gossip Group. There are 25 or 30 of us who gather at 9:30 and sit and have coffee and talk about the politics of the world and Chatham and other silly things. We're now meeting once a week upstairs in the small conference room, thankful for the Citizen Center. So we do the, and I think, you know, I'm encouraged to hear that we're opening our minds to, you know, additional or diverse plans. And I don't know how that's going to get coordinated and communicated, because I think the failure so far, the reason we haven't got acceptance for Citizen Center, is we haven't come to a consensus. And that's, as the last speaker said, we really need to. And one more comment on feeding. I agree, every man should know how to cook. I love cooking, and I have a good friend who now gets, he doesn't know how to boil eggs. It's silly.
We're all hungry. We're coming over your house afterwards, too. Is there anybody else in the annex that would like to speak? All right. Shawna, can you read a couple more emails?
Sure. For question five, what else would you like us to know about the new senior center? We have, it must be an inviting and welcoming venue for senior attendees, should accommodate those with mobility and hearing and related disabilities. Complimentary coffee, tea, and water should also be available, and complimentary transportation by a minivan for the town residents, since many seniors no longer drive. Another is that I think the town should decide on a budget for the new building, whatever and wherever we do, and stay within it. Through the Community Voice Portal, Viking Senior says, "Chatham needs an updated accessible senior center. Our seniors have contributed so much to making Chatham special. I would use it regularly and suspect many who are living alone would welcome a place to socialize, exercise, and learn." And finally, from Lynn, an email, "Be realistic about the space needed for activities. Maybe we can have a split senior center, the community center for sports in some meetings, and the senior center for other activities."
Shawna, thank you so much. Our two hours is just about up now. I want to thank all of you for your participation tonight and thoughtful comments, both online, for the ones who sent in the emails into the Community Voice Portal, and certainly to all of you tonight here in the annex. You know, all the comments, again, whether in person, virtually, or through the portal, the emails are going to be summarized into a comprehensive report and forwarded to the select board for the review and the discussion at follow-up meetings. Now, if you have more thoughts and suggestions after tonight, please send them through the Community Voice Portal or the community forum email, as we will keep this open through 5:00 PM through this Friday. So 5:00 PM, Friday, November 12. Thank you all for participating. Have a very good night. We're all going over to Dave's house, okay, for food anyways, and I'm going to turn this over to Peter Kokolas--
All right, everyone, before, just keep it down so I can close this out, just I want to add my thanks to everyone, especially--
I have the mic.
Yeah, I'm out of my mic.
Close your ears.
Okay. I want to thank everyone for your participation, especially all those people that send in their things electronically through emails. I'm not going to go through anything more. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Jeff?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Shereen?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
I hear him. Chair says aye. We're adjourned.
Thank you, Brad.
Oh, thank you, Brad.